Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you. Today is Monday, May 15th, and I'd like to welcome you to a meeting of the Concord School Board of Trustees. This is a meeting of the school board in public for the purpose of conducting the school corporations' business and is not considered a public community meeting. There is time for public participation about agenda items as indicated on the agenda. If you would like to address the board, just fill out a yellow card and get it to Mrs. Warren here before you speak. Welcome. It's nice to see everyone's faces. I know today is a beautiful day, so we will get you in and out so you can enjoy the rest of your evening. But I want you to know that you're always welcome to all of our board meetings, and thank you for being here this evening. And with that, we'll start with the plan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We always start our board meetings with something great that's happening around the district. And this evening, the Good Things is brought to us by Dr. Molnar.
All right, can I have my high school representatives come on up? That's all these wonderful faces over there. So I know that there's a lot of kids here, but you're welcome. I have no respect for some of the time friends or we're going to talk about how we should. But guys, I would be remiss if I didn't finish this year's Good Things with our Fine Arts Department. Yes, it is something that was out there a couple of years ago, but we're continuing to do amazing things in that department and it deserves to be showcased here at the department. So again, thank you guys for letting me have the opportunity to present. Just a little overview before I let them do the most of the talking because it's about them, it's not about me. I did want to highlight what Fine Arts means to Concord High School. Currently, this school year, we had 1,103 students take a Fine Arts class. That is 65% of our school. So two-thirds of our students take a Fine Arts class at Concord High School. So we tout that. We are very proud of that statistic and the love of the opportunities that you guys provide for us at Concord School. I'm very impressed. Arts is incredibly important there. You can see a few long lists of Fine Arts classes that we offer at Concord. Everything from 2D art, pottery, photography, digital design, performance dance, vocal jazz. You name it, guys, we have it. And again, we are proud of the offering that we have. Thirty-four classes in all. The studies are... There are many studies out there that show the importance of the arts in public education and how kids who take art, whether it's visual arts, performing arts, they do better in their core classes. These fine young people are testament of that. They're some of the best and the brightest that Concord Schools has to offer. I am really just humbled at all they do on a multitude of faces. It's amazing how they can juggle all things. But with that said, I'm going to first talk about the Jazz Band and Wind Ensemble. Just so you know, just a little highlight, and I'll let some of our friends chat and play a little bit because that's the fun part. Wind Ensemble, if you don't know, that's a class that we offered here in the spring semester. Wind Ensemble is really our concert band under the direction of Mr. Spradling. He does an amazing job. Hall of Fame band director for sure. He along with our Wind Ensemble placed in the top 16 bands of the state of Indiana. That is not in class. That is all schools combined. Some schools are big enough to have two bands that perform in this. And we are in the top 16 of those bands in Indiana, schools like Carmel and Settler Grove and some of those monsters down around the Dora. Obviously, Jazz Cafe, we have a variety of different jazz offerings, including a jazz club where kids who couldn't fit into their schedule, if you have the opportunity, can jump on the roll. But I do want to tell Jazz Cafe, which is Friday, make sure you buy your tickets, folks. It is one of the premier events Concord has offered. The people who have been here know that event very well. It is absolutely a treat for everybody to follow. So I'm going to have a few of my concert folks talk about just their experiences with bands, with music, and I'm going to have them play a little bit. Stephen?
I'll certainly talk about Wind Ensemble. So we were presented with the opportunity of performing at State, and this all goes back to my mother when we received our A. Susan. We played one of our teams at Hartlewood in March, and after that, our main focus was to be right for a state qualifier at the high school. Throughout the season at state qualifier, we participated in many, many rehearsals, which happened every Monday and Wednesday. Our minds were enriched and even sometimes overwhelmed with information on how to make yourselves a better band. And each rehearsal often led to discover at least one joke from Mr. Spradling and one really, really, really long story from Mr. Peterson, which is some sort of a life lesson. State qualifiers came around, and we did make it to state unexpectedly, but they expected of us. We performed at State the following Saturday and wrote a two-hour buzzword that reminds us that we are their family, not a band. We did play 16th in the state, and I'd like to thank you for your support to the arts community, which I think is...
I'm doing a lot of things, but I'm in jazz. My concert band, a lot of these were self-choiring. And one of my favorite parts about jazz is we went on a lot of trips and we all have performances. So just being in class with all of my peers, Mr. Peterson is definitely my favorite. So I continue to make us a better version of ourselves. It's still my second year at Concord, but I feel like my group has been a lot.
Hi, my name is Chrissy Toyo. This is my instrument. I do jazz and concert band and orchestra and also percussion. And something I love about Jazz Band especially is the relationship I have with Mr. Peterson has grown since the end of my freshman year when I was in Club Row Six. And I was like, so scary, he's so small. But he has made me to a more well-spoken person I am today. He's pushed me, challenged me, and made me look great. And I can say the same for a lot of my group teachers. And for that, I'm very thankful that you guys help us out. You know, like, be a safe, you're the people are success. So thank you.
Play a little bit?
Sure.
Yeah. Two, three, four, two, three. I'm going to play about 15 seconds of our state qualifying Wind Ensemble just so you guys can hear that. Thanks, guys. I wish we could play it all. We just don't have the time. But again, top 16 in the state. Kudos to all involved. It really is an amazing event. Next, we have our Drama Department. Oh, I should... I'd be remiss about saying we did not get choral or orchestra. They were doing pop culture, getting ready for pop culture, and I didn't want the Birdman with One More Night. Orchestra has their orchestra concert tonight. My daughter's involved in that, so I'll be there. So they had that, they were getting prepared for that. So that's why they're not here. It's not that we don't like them. We love them, just we wanted to make sure that they were focused on their musical. Over 1,000 even sold between the two shows. Just look at all the kids that are involved. And again, we have a class, guys, but most of this is done through audition, tryouts, and vouchers of their time. Thank you to the parents. Just an amazing commitment by all that are involved to put on. It really just makes a world-class performance for high school kids. Both Shows, Clue, and Fabs Family were amazing successes. This is the first time our plan has sold this many tickets since before COVID. Really did enjoy that show for a while. So I'll have a couple of our representatives from our Drama Department.
Hi, I'm Paxton. I'm involved in theater as well as choir, band, and jazz.
And I'm Rochelle. I am in theater. I am also in choir and orchestra. So I can kind of represent them today. I'm a senior. And if you want to talk about some of the stuff we've done?
Yeah, so a few of the things that we do every year is Christmas set in Hartlewood, which involves like almost the entire music department. And we have Jazz Cafe, which is coming up this Friday. Orchestra Festival is tonight. And plus, both last year, we did...
Last year?
Last week.
You're good, you're good.
We did the Fall Play Two and the Spring Musical.
Yes. And so one thing, so I have been here, obviously. I have been in every show possible. I love theater so much. It's such a friendly place to come back every year. It oddly means so much to me. And I must mention, so one of the favorite things about this is obviously the community that we form. And it's something that, of course, teachers and different people have helped to foster this safe space, which I am so excited to come back and watch those in the future. And I think that really speaks to how much it's about for my new students. And I also want to quickly say that we're saying I'm a student. I'm on that BCA DC all the time. And it's true for all of us here. But it's very nice to be performing, and you can look at the little tech booth right next to our amazing technical person, which is pretty hyped and loves to death. And I see so many different faces of different kinds of people. And it's really nice to know that you guys are here for you. Thank you, guys, for that.
So next, we have our Corporation Art Show. This is going to be twofold. We're going to kind of roll into into the actual art show information that Mr. Kurtz is going to present here in a bit. But we did want to focus on a couple of our seniors. Lucy and Ashlyn are going to talk about a little bit their art. We just want to talk about that.
I'm Ashlyn, and I'm thankful for the art program here at Concord because it allows students to express themselves through creativity. Although core classes are important, I believe art classes are just as beneficial. The art program at Concord continually sets students up for success with student work being displayed in art shows around the area here after the year. I'd love having the opportunity to also participate in these shows myself. My favorite memory was actually being able to display my own senior showcase at the district art show this year. Thank you for supporting the arts at Concord.
Hi, I'm Lucy Chure. I'm also an artist, along with Ashlyn. I'm also incredibly thankful for the arts program at Concord. It's really influenced me as an artist, being able to learn from Mr. Kurtz and how his positive impact on my life has been really nice. I mostly use my art to express my own emotional feeling. It's sort of like an escapism or a way to create a different reality that other people can experience. And I really love being able to share that with people. My favorite memory has been probably like just being able to connect the others and also make friends throughout the years in high school through my art and through our shared love of art. So thank you for being willing to support both of us through our creative efforts.
So just kind of highlighting some of Ashlyn and Lucy's work. This is... This one was more from this dish. Work from... So folks, we want to thank you for the opportunity to highlight the Fine Arts program at Concord High School. Again, thank you for your support and all of the things that you do to promote being visible at these events, telling these kids how much you appreciate them. And you go... Do you have any questions? All right?
Which, as you said, brings us to our art show recognition, which also has been here first. I don't think that, yeah. But they're all going to come up and their parents will be...
So if you won some kind of award in the art show, you're here for that. Your students just come up and be over here. I'll be calling up names and talking a little bit about the art show. So my name is Mr. Kurtz. I'm the head of the art department at the high school, and I hope to see some of the younger people in our classes very soon. I'm just going to say a couple of things about our art show. I know a lot of some of you guys there and probably a lot of you. So we have an annual art show every year for all Concord schools, and it's always so, so great. And it's amazing how every single year it's all this great again. And we just have students coming up from the different schools every year that are so talented and are all... I think at the high school, our teachers are fortunate to get all the experienced area and all the other arts students lower grade, poorer than these kids. We get them at kind of the top of their game and then push them off into the world. So at our art show, I'm going to start with the high school art show. Say a few things about that. So we have a senior showcase part of the show. The seniors get the opportunity to present a bunch of their work on one space for the art show. Anything they've ever done in their lives is put in that, that has to be just from this year. And we always give a scholarship award and then also showcase award, two separate parts. And the scholarship award goes to the student who just showed an immense level of talent in multiple mediums and just really wowed us with technical skill in art. And Ashlyn, she shot that this year. And so she'll be getting a second senior award on Wednesday. And the senior showcase display award goes to the student who's this year. And that award goes to the student who used that space, that showcase space in the most creative, really cool way. And she had this cool, like, thing that the... If you were there, you'd see. I'm not going to spend time describing it, but it was really cool how she used that thing. And so she got that award. She also received a People's Choice Award. That's an award that we do at different levels, different age levels. But at high school, she got that award publicly. Go for that. So people come in and they go for their favorite pieces. High school work and others, which she devoted goes for one of her digital... Best of Show Award goes to Sydney Mast over there. And that is an award that is not given by the public or by the art teachers, but by some judges that come in and judge the show. So out of everything in the high school art, part of the art show, Sydney's got that award, Best of Show for the high school. And at Junior High, we had Best of Show Award for that as well, and People's Choice Award, same deal as the high school. The Best of Show went to Maya Franks. And People's Choice with Damaris LeMain. You guys in eighth grade, seventh grade, so coming here next year, right? And we had People's Choice Award for every building this year, which is something we haven't shown in the past. So I'm going to list out the awards for those other buildings. So for CIS, the People's Choice winner was Haylen Moore. At East Side was Melanie Teal. And Art though, Juliana Masola. South Side, People's Choice Award went to David Rivera. And People's Choice for West Side was Elena Baum. So congratulations to all of you that keep doing art, making art, being creative. We look forward to having you at high school eventually. Thank you.
They can get all the students lined up here. They can get one group picture, mom's a dad. You get pictures, and then you work as a student. If you want to come closer up here, then you can have that in the background. Okay, thank you. You're welcome to stay, or you can go enjoy your evening. Flavor Street is open, so go.
Right, there you go.
Especially the building that sings here. I was smiling at her, you didn't see it. Sorry, Kate. Well, thank you for everybody who decided to stay. I can clear a room really quickly, that's for sure. But I do say that I feel like we need live music at every board meeting. I know, like, that just kind of, that was... That was incredible. So exciting. All right, Carla, were there any yellow cards? That brings us to consent agenda, which this evening includes minutes from 5:123, workshop minutes from 5:123, accounts payable claims, payroll claims distribution summary report, human resource report, and conference. And a motion by Mrs. Towner, a second by Mrs. Davis. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed? That brings us to item... Oh, yes, sorry, we have a pause. Dr. Molnar, we have somebody with us here tonight. Could you make an introduction to our new girls' basketball coach?
Yeah, folks, I'm pleased to...
Give you a speech to it.
I'm very pleased and honored to introduce Brandon Abel as our new girls' basketball coach for the upcoming season. He comes to us from Edwardsburg and from Five Star Life in a variety of different capacities and a wealth of basketball knowledge. We are super excited about what he's going to bring to Concord community and to our ladies' basketball program. So welcome, Brandon.
You can't say you weren't, like, not looking.
I thought it was going to be a little bit quiet.
You can. Welcome. That brings us to item 4.1. Dr. Kendall, you have an MOU.
So this is MOU with Positively Elkar. And we partnered with them in the past, so this is nothing new. This is just a renewal, essentially partnering with all Elkar incoming schools on helping us focus on drug prevention strategies with our students and making sure that we're helping them understand ways that they can make positive choices rather than... So seeking your approval on this MOU.
I have a motion by Mr. Molili, a second by Mrs. Davis. Any comments or questions for Dr. Kendall? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed? Thank you, Dr. Kendall. That brings you to 4.2, another MOU.
Yes, this one is with the construction roundup again, similar to what we did in the, actually, it was spring, with CIS and having a construction club. It went so well that we want to do it again and want your approval to enter in that MOU as well, so we can have another round for students in the fall.
I have a motion by Mrs. Towner, a second by Mrs. Davis. Any comments or questions for Dr. Kendall?
How many students did we have for this last year? It was between 20 and 25.
Who else? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed? That brings us to 4.3. Dr. Kendall, you'd like us to maybe possibly approve some handbook?
Yes, we have a collection of our assistant principals and deans here seeking your approval for our handbook. And just you guys are aware, you're approving the content. That content by Edwardsburg will be embedded onto our website, so we won't have to have hard copies. All the links are, everything will be online. So that's something new that we have planned.
Are there hard copies, like, from here or requesting?
We couldn't push it out of that. We couldn't push it out of hard copy community, too.
I have a motion by Mrs. Davis, a second by Mr. Molili. Any comments or questions for Dr. Kendall?
Thank you to all of the assistant principals. Every year, I just mean, I can take a lot of courage to go through to change one word by year. Thank you.
All in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed? Thank you, Dr. Kendall. Mr. Myers?
Yes, thank you. I, you might remember a couple of weeks ago, I was here talking about a secondary math adoption. It's typical that we would go through this process in a variety of different curricular areas about every year. This year happens to be math in sixth grade for Alford, too. And between our last time that we met and this time, we had a parent review. And so we had a couple of parents come in to review, review what we had and answer some questions there. And today, one thing that would be typical of us would be to ask for an adoption for six years. Tonight, we're, I'm asking for us to adopt this for one. And the reason for that is because recent legislation has come out this past year, which is great that our textbook rental in Indiana is no longer. And so we are still trying to navigate all of the different pieces that are related to that legislation. And so I believe that it's prudent for us to adopt for one year. Our intent would still be to adopt for the whole six years, but this buys... Our intent would still be to adopt for the whole six years, but this buys us some time before signing a contract of that length, so that we can understand the law. So I would ask for your approval to sign with Amplify Desmos Math for one year, so that we can move forward in training and over.
Motion to approve.
Oh, second. I thought there was going to be some.
Well, I do have questions.
Yeah.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Mulally, a second by Mrs. Towner. Any comments or questions?
The first one I had, you know, we set this out for the public review. How many, whether they had a person or whatever form, how many requests to review each year?
So there were four. One was virtual, one was drop-in, and then two came to.
Answer yes.
Sorry, so does this mean we're going to be basically back doing this again next year?
We will be back doing this again next year with more information on the subject.
Yeah, I add to that. It wouldn't be a full review of what we're adopting like this, it would just be the first.
So sort of the main question, so if you have this debate, does the work, if the board is, one year free for other?
I hope not. Our hope would be that we're adopting pieces of curriculum for a long period of time for a variety of reasons, but one would be so that we, it takes a lot of effort and work to really understand the curriculum. And so coming to you today to say we want to do this for one year is strictly because of the new legislation and not because of our practice changing. So by this point next year, when we have our next adoption, we would come to you with, again, a longer period of time to put a request.
Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Mr. Myers. Hopefully this thing can figure out. That brings us to item 5.1. Miss Spear, you have a board policy for us to review.
Yeah, very board. I come for you first reading a board policy, if you want to, it's a very exciting role to play. What I am bringing to you tonight is really to declare that you should have a policy to be good sample of the musicals. The document that's been shared with you on page three, there's an edit in there. We've been very intentional in aligning both with existing board policy and state guidance surrounding the topic, but it has to do with students who've been cited for conflict and behavior and decided to have those students be there, medical lessons, and they're running every day. And help the guests deal with those who are not. Bring that to you for her team tonight. We'll be back with you. I don't have any questions.
Would you like the same practice if we come up with any questions, just being one year old? All right. Thank you, ma'am. That brings us to 6.1. Mr. Evans, you have financial reports for us.
Which one are we looking for, Mr. Evans?
The board report. Scroll down one page. And the financial summary, thank you. We have the financial summary for period ending April 30, 2023. Brief, quick comments that I would have. First of all, in the education fund, we don't pay our staff every other week, in a crisis phase in spring, crisis phase in fall. It means that one time this spring and one time this fall, which is in six months. For that to happen, clicking that year, there is a three payroll month, because of the way it runs fall. That third payroll will be in the month of June, so they get some cash balance to go over to that. There and the education fund will accommodate that third payroll. Payroll is roughly a million, three, four payroll, so you could, a little bit of a cash balance to go to that. The second comment that was made would be in curriculum material. I've been telling you for the past couple of months that there are so many outstanding mistakes that go this way. The state has paid us money. It did not come in time for this particular point, but we have received our reimbursement for textbooks for this school year. And so we will have that money to pay for the adoption that we just agreed to. So that will be reflected in that. The final comment that was made would be health insurance. The number that showed that the cash balance is not included reimbursement that we submitted on reimbursement that we did have coming to us, that's yet to be received. Some of it has been received, not during this time period, others have, other amounts have not been received. So for that amount stood, hopefully, we can protect another person. So I'd give that to the board.
I have a motion by Mrs. Davis, a second by Mrs. Towner. Any comments?
Sure. We need to turn something here, we were going back to audit the previous claims to see if we were overcharged.
We are in the process of doing that. We've had a couple of virtual meetings to kind of talk, clarify about where we are in that process. So we're not quite sure, we know they're making progress, we don't have any fire number yet, but as we get closer and look previous, if I remember, we have to come back and show those. But that is, at this point, we're in progress.
Any else? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Mr. Evans. That brings us to item 6.2. We have Ms. Klinger and Mr. Brock. And some thought you would have a little board something with you. I don't feel like that's okay.
Thank you to the board for having us tonight. We know that therapy docs are proven to support mental health, executive functioning, memory skills, attendance, emotional regulation, literacy development, and motivation. They rely on their social instinctive skills to offer social, emotional, cognitive, and health benefits to the people they spend time with. Concorde Westside is requesting to bridge a partnership with Top Match Dogs, Service Dogs, to pursue an opportunity for therapy doc support for our school community, utilizing funds from the Community Schools Grant initiated for the 2324 school year. We respectfully ask for the board's support to move forward with that partnership with Top Match Service Dogs, so that our students have consistent access to a trained therapy doc, resulting in the aforementioned improvement of skill. Are there any questions that I can add?
I would add, Mr. Shelley has looked at the agreement.
A motion by Mrs. Davis, a second by Mrs. Towner. Come on, Davis. No, I didn't have a question. I just did a second.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to say that I highly appreciate all the work you did. I mean, reaching out to other schools, finding, I mean, it's not like we're going into this lightly. You really did your research and it sounds exciting and wonderful and I just appreciate the effort you did.
I would go with that. Yes, what you shared with us was a lot of work on your end, but very helpful on ours. So we're very thankful for all of the work you did on this.
I'd like to publicly thank Taylor Klinger for her years worth of work that she has done on this project.
Any comments? Are there any comments or questions any further? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Thank you. You guys are very excited today. All right, that brings us to item 6.3, Mr. Munster.
Yeah, so representing Southside here on this one, but as you know, Southside is a capturing kids' hearts school. Capturing Kids' Hearts, this review is mostly just training for teachers on how to build positive relationships with students, strategies for creating an environment in the classroom that is warm and welcoming, but also giving students and teachers the tools to regulate themselves and be very, and be self-directed, which is our goal. So they have one more year. This would consist of some training, but also consists of, there's somebody from Capturing Kids' Hearts or from the public group who comes and visits and then gets feedback to the staff. And it's really nice to have their eyes on things. And so ask for your approval tonight for one more year of capturing kids' hearts training for Southside.
I have a motion by Mrs. Towner, a second by Mrs. Davis. Any comments or questions?
Is this one of those things, I'll be honest, I do a lot of searching to get that supposed to be on the website.
Sure.
Find out what this was. Is this one of those things where there has to be like a recert every year, every couple of years? Or is this a one-time deal?
Yeah, so the only thing after this year that would consist of are, we hire new people who need, you know, let's say a new teacher that's in a training unit. We may send them somewhere, but that cost would be pretty minimal. So this is, after this, though, there's no recertification. None of that. I do know Southside would like to become a showcase school. So I know one of the goals for one more year of support is for them to be a showcase school that, you know, if we allow others to come, other school visitors to learn from that.
Anything else? There is nothing. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That brings us to sharing from the board.
So as you are all no doubt aware, everybody in here is no doubt aware, this is actually National Physical Fitness and Sports Month. Happy National Physical Fitness and Sports Month. And so when I was preparing for this, I did one thing. Children now actually spend about seven and a half hours per day, on average, in front of the screen. And another number I came up with is about one out of three children physically active every night. Because it's, I think about 33% of our children get 60 minutes of rest and exercise every day, or physical activity, whatever time. So with that in mind, I want to take time to recognize a group of educators who have taken initiative on this to provide an opportunity for our girls who get elementary level, to step out of their comfort zone and work a little on physical fitness, but also introduce some mental resilience into their lives. That's the critical stage for them. Girls on the Run, the name of the program, is a national program that served over 2 million children nationwide since its beginning. It's a program that's, other than getting them out there in running circles, figuring out their 5K, they encourage goal setting. At one point, somebody wanted to get, I think, for that particular day, they wanted to get 13 laps in, which is about a mile, 1.3 miles. I don't get 1.3 miles of anything anymore. And the next thing is, is there's less focus really on physical competition aspect, aspect of it. Kids are competitive, but not all kids are, put them in a field where they're going to run. Competition won't break out, but there's been a lot of time kind of focusing less on that. Those are the kids that might not necessarily be able to do that. I encourage teamwork and positive peer relations. Another goal I heard is I'm going to need to talk to one new person today. Nothing about running anything. More importantly, I encourage resilience, which is defined as the ability to bounce back and recover from problems and obstacles, which I think. I think our parentless group is more than aware that that's something that's lacking in these days, especially in girls, but also in boys. I think that's important because self-confidence starts to drop, they say it around the age of 90. And physical activity starts to drop for girls around the age of 10. So I don't think it's necessarily a coincidence that we start seeing suicide rates start to creep up. They're all at that same age. So we have two programs in Concorde land, specifically, we have Westside and Southside. And these girls, two times to a week over, I think, of course, they're what, 10 weeks? Yeah, it's more than 10 weeks. And the culmination was a 5K, which encouraged this past weekend. I think about a nine-year-old running three miles, and then I think about myself running anything. Pretty spectacular. And the results were, nothing short of spectacular. Several achievements were reached, thought about goal setting, and a lot of meaningful moments that were shared between participants that there is a longer team I'm not going to share. But I do want to share, recognize, involve the staff and put their time and effort into these kids. Extracurriculars at the elementary level is something that's pretty hard to come by. And so when somebody takes some time to do that, I want to think of you as recognized. So I want to recognize from Westside, Babe Rockerman, Jill Miller, Katie Kaufman, and Kaylin McKenzie. They were the coaches there. And from Southside, I want to recognize Adriana Robinson, Sandra Milano, and Mary, and Deanna Wilson. I've spent a lot of time for them there, very hard for these kids. And they have their day going, President, and then you guys should be too. That's all.
Beautifully said. Thank you so much for sharing. You're right, it is a great program. Well, I have a little something to present to this beautiful room here and to add a little bit of pride along the way for all the work that we as board members do this past, last, when? Last Tuesday, Wednesday? Sorry, it all goes. The board travel down to, twice a year, we go down to Clement for legislative and legal updates. And thank heaven for the support that we get from ISBA and their diligence in keeping us up to date on all things legal and relevant to what boards are facing and school operations are going to have to deal with. And in our participation, we as board members do a lot of work to make sure that our school is running in accordance with all of those clauses and legislative updates. And part of that work gets recognized through ISBA and Concorde is very proud. We have been a distinguished board for, I don't even, quite a few years running. And that's a lot to be proud of. I want to applaud all of us past, present, and future board members that will take this torch, because not only does it keep us in the loop and knowledgeable and able to do our jobs the way we are supposed to, to support the administration and the students and our staff, but it also lets future administrators and people know that want to work in school corporation, that they have people that are willing to do the work. This recognizes this and lets everybody know that you are coming to a place where everybody's willing to work together. So it's a lot to be proud of.
everybody's willing to work together, so it's a lot to be proud of, I am proud to have my name on a few of these little plaques, and I want to congratulate us as a board and present this to you so you can, we can display it, and just a lot of congratulations to us. They do a lot, I, you know, going down to Clement isn't the, you know, it is what it is. But however, ISBA really is so helpful in letting us know what is coming our way, what we may have to deal with, what we may not have to deal with, what we can and cannot do, and, you know, getting us, fighting for us, and helping guide legislators to, let, hopefully let us do more, so, so thank, thank ISBA for that, so, thank you, everyone. Any else?
Super thank you. Yeah, so, just building on that, congratulations to the board for that award, every time I come back from one of those, I can ask the folks that work with me, I'm often, and this time in particular, just very thankful that I have the board that I have to work with, it's a great working board, professional in every way, and good to work with, and also a little bit fun sometimes, so. I have a quick letter I would just like to read, so, we know the Potter Marathon is a huge success this year and broke records, and as a result of that, actually received a letter from the CEO of Riley, and so I'd like to read that to you. It says, "How could I not be in awe of what the 187 students on Concord community schools achieved to help the young people though likely never know? I'm highly impressed by their dedication and drive, as well as the support for the families, from the families and the community, with my best," so, wanted to share that with you today. And then lastly, just some dates due tonight, there's an off-school orchestra festival in Mcute Gym, Jazz Cafe has been mentioned Friday, last student day, June 1st, and then end of the year celebrations on June 2nd, we will, we'll have, same as last year, we'll have Donuts and coffee in the lobby, that seemed to go well last year, and people liked that, and then we'll do the program, we'll be back at 8, we'll honor our entire reunion first, and then graduation anniversary on June 6th, and probably believe it's May 15th or so, I'm just sitting on the corner. That's it.
All right, thank you, everybody, for your participation and joining us this beautiful evening, I hope you guys can get out and enjoy, and we are adjourned at 4:52.